Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call meeting to order. This is our regular meeting for Planning Commission, July 12th, 2017. All rise. Commissioner Morkes and the leaders in the classroom.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Morkes. I need a little call, please.
Chair Kevin Rooney. Vice Chair Maria Maciel Jr.
Here.
Commissioner Edmund Morkes.
Here.
Commissioner Edith Flonis.
Here.
I want to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Rooney. He's out on medical leave.
Second.
Any objections? CNN, motion passes. I now open oral communication. For anyone wishing to address the commission on anything other than the items listed on the agenda for tonight, please state your name and address and restrict yourself for three minutes. See any no interest?
I walked in here to this meeting thinking there was going to be something else.
Sir, can you speak into the...
This one?
Yes, please.
Citizen Baltimore Park walked in here thinking there was a meeting for something else, but I asked somebody who was in the agenda and they were very kind to lend me the leaflet that was mailed down. I live right here, I have an address right here. I did not receive any of this at all and I'm a little astonished what I saw about right now. But I wish it would be a little bit more, take a little bit, mature my time, to notify the public about meetings that are being conducted same way the last city council meeting that was supposed to take place. I walked over here, it was canceled. So I would like to be notified to...
Sir, would you please speak into the mic again and give me your name?
Jesse Plata.
And how do you spell your name?
Plata, P-L-A-T-A.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plata. Is it for one of the items on the agenda?
I don't know what's on the agenda.
No, Mr. Plata, talking about one of the items on the agenda?
The agenda that I'm just handing.
No, this is a notice of public hearing, so we're not even aware of what's on the agenda.
Oh.
The agendas are in the back. Isn't that right, Amy?
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, anyone else wishing to speak? See any no interest? We now close oral communication. Our next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Any commissioners who would like to pull any items to the discussion? Can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any objections? CNN, motion passes, three zero. Next item on the agenda, Scott.
Thank you, Chair. Honorable Vice Chair Commissioners and members of the audience, this item before you is a request for consideration of the zone variance to allow a seven-foot-tall wrought iron fence along the front property line adjacent to the public right-of-way for the property of 4725 Center Street, which is currently occupied by Valley Mutual Water Company. They have waterlifting and pumping mechanical equipment there. This request by Valley Mutual Water Company stems from ongoing issues at the property including unwanted vandalism, theft, and trespassers. It's anticipated that the increase in the fence height will reduce these unwanted intrusions and therefore reduce police calls. There we go. Here on the map, you can see their existing pump house buildings. They're proposing an addition here to the existing pump house building, but that's not under consideration tonight. The proposed wrought iron fence will go right along the front property line, right here. The property is approximately eighty feet wide and the proposed wrought iron fence will extend the entire frontage. It will be painted black, able to withstand the elements, and passersby, including police patrol cars, will be able to see through, increasing visibility of the site. And it's going to be your standard wrought iron fence, seven feet tall, right along the property line. Staff has the opinion that the requested variance is reasonable and that the location and use of the property represents a unique condition, being a water pumping facility. It is surrounded by single-family residential zone properties, which would not otherwise apply to properties within the same zone and therefore warrants the applicant's request. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission open the public hearing and following the public hearing, adopt Planning Commission Resolution PC 1711 entitled "The Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baltimore Park Approving a Zone Variance to Allow Wrought-Iron Fence Along the Front Property Line Adjacent to the Public Right-of-Way to Exceed the Maximum Allowed Height Within the R1 Single Family Residential Zone." The location is 4725 Center Street. The applicant is Richard Stinson, representing Valley Mutual Water Company, and the case number is ZB 715. And this concludes Scott's presentation.
Thank you, Amy. Any questions from the commissioners to Scott? I now open a public hearing on this agenda item. If you want, wish to speak, please step forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes. See any no interest? And I close public communications. Once again, Scott, commissioners, any questions? Alright, can I get a motion?
I move to approve the resolution.
My second.
Any objections? CNN, motion passes, three zero.
That's Resolution 17-11.
Next agenda item?
Honorable Chair. Honorable Chair Commissioners and members of the audience, the request before you is a request for consideration for an ambulance services facility located in an existing building in the industrial commercial... Sorry. I C zone. Location 13329 Barbie Avenue, applicant Care Ambulance Services Inc., case number CP 851. The applicant Care Ambulance Services Inc. is requesting approval of a conditional use permit for ambulance services facility in the industrial commercial zone within an existing building. The surrounding zone designations are industrial commercial to the east and west, residential to the north, and the interstate temporary ways to the south. The property is approved with one building partitioned into two units in which Care Ambulance Services will occupy one of the units. The slide shows the aerial view. The building will consist of approximately 2,400 square feet of office area, 8,000 square feet of indoor staging area. The proposed business at this location, Care Ambulance Services, will restrict any testing of emergency signaling devices to between 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM and within the confines of the facility staging area. All emergency signaling devices are to remain non-operational until the ambulances have reached the public right-of-way. Staff has reviewed the application and operational characteristics and has determined that with added conditions of approval, the proposed business will not have an adverse impact to the adjacent properties. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution PC 1710 entitled "A Request for Consideration of a Warehouse Facility Located in an Existing Building in the Industrial Commercial I C Zone" pursuant to table 153.050.020 and the city's municipal code. Location 13329 Barbie Avenue, applicant Care Ambulance Services Inc., case number CP 851. This concludes Scott's presentation.
Thank you, Ms. President. Any questions from commissioners to staff?
I have a question. May I ask you a favor? Is this ambulance services for when they break down? Is that what you're asking?
No, it's for emergency dispatch.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? CNN, I now open public communications. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please step forward, state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Can I use this one down here?
Yeah.
Good evening, Honorable Chair Commissioners. My name is Lyle Hanson. I'm from 1517 Braded Court in Orange, California, representing attorney ambulance tonight, and I'm here to be happy to have any questions for you.
Awesome.
And I'll submit the rest of my time.
Just to note that we did add the condition that siren would only start if it hits a public driveway. So they won't be coming out of the driveway with the sirens on, right?
Anyone else wishing to speak? On this particular item. See any no interest? And I close public communications. Once again, Scott, any questions from commissioners to staff? CNN, I'll accept the motion.
Okay, I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any objections? CNN, motion passes, three zero, for PC 1711. Next agenda.
Good evening, Honorable Chair Commissioners and members of the audience. The request before you is a request for consideration...
Could you speak louder, please?
Good evening, Vice Chair Commissioners and members of the audience. The request before you is a request for consideration of a conditional use permit for the onsite sale of beer and wine, type 41, live entertainment and existing restaurant located within C2 general commercial zone pursuant to table 153 dash dot zero five zero dot zero two zero in the city's municipal code. Located at 1628 Whatte Avenue, applicant Hiponito Cerano, case number CP 849. The lot in which the business is located is surrounded by C2 general commercial zone to the southeast, west, and west side. To the north, the property is designated as a part three multi-family residential. The lot is a 55,77 square foot lot with a 9,540 square foot building that is surrounded by two different parcels that encompasses the entire shopping center to the left and the right. The site plan will show that the location of the Candela's Restaurant is located at the center of the building, which occupies approximately 1,900 square feet of floor area for their existing business. The location of the alcohol will be located behind the register counter where no alcohol will be displayed to the public. The sales of beer and wine shall be limited to the hours of 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Sunday, which also consists with the hours of operation. Live entertainment will only be permitted Friday to Sunday evenings from 5:00 AM to 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. The location designated for live entertainment will be at the center of the... the center of the restaurant, where it would be turned into a buffet during non-performance or non-entertainment hours. This property is located within Sunset Shire 4048 dot zero three authorized for one on-sale ABC license. Currently, there is one business operating with an on-sale business license within Sunset Shire, and this request will cause undue concentration. Fighting sole public convenience and necessity can be made because administrative policy number 028 adopted by the city council encourages restaurants to serve alcohol. The existing business with the on-sale ABC license is not considered an eating establishment and therefore cannot be... is not convenient for family-oriented dining. Adopting CP 849 for Candela's Restaurant will be in accordance with administrative policy 028. Staff has reviewed the application and operational characteristics. Has determined that with the added conditions of approval, the proposed business will not have an adverse impact to the adjacent properties. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution PC 17-08, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baltimore adopting the findings of fact and proving a conditional use permit outline the onsite sales of beer and wine beside 41 ABC licenses in conjunction with live entertainment at an existing restaurant pursuant to table 153 dot zero five zero dot two zero, zero two zero in the city's municipal code. Location 1628 Whatte Avenue, applicant Hiponito Cerano, case number CP 849. And this concludes Scott's presentation.
Thank you. Any questions from commissioners to the staff?
I have a question, Amy. How many ABC licenses do we have in the city of Baltimore?
Total?
Yeah, more, approximately.
Approximately, and this includes both onsite sales, which are restaurants and bars, and then offsite sales, which are like supermarkets and places like that. We have approximately 70 total.
What about with live entertainment?
I'm going to take a stab in the dark, although this is not formal. I would probably want to say maybe about between no more than a dozen, fifteen, maybe at the most. And most of those, obviously, you know, have mariachis. And I actually kind of think that's probably a little high-end, but...
My question will be, what kind of live entertainment are we having at this restaurant?
Actually, the applicant can...
Okay, we'll ask the applicant. And my next question will be, the hours of operations on a weekend were from 10:00 to 10:00. Or if we're selling beer, we're from 10:00 to 10:00. What about during the week?
Same.
Same day?
So it'll be 10:00 to 10:00.
Okay.
Same as this week.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners to the staff? Okay, I now open public communications on this agenda item. Anyone wishing to speak, step forward, state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Estela Barrios Campos. I'm the owner of the restaurant Candela's. The operation would be from 10:00 to 10:00, but weekends is only a DJ. She started a big band of mariachi this year, she's a DJ. And hopefully in the future karaoke, it's something short from 6:00 to 10:00 and private stuff and something. Don't let it be such food, good food. Any questions?
Yes, now how about for the parking lot area, like security? To kind of have a little bit of organization and, you know, make sure everything's under control as far as parking spots?
We have security guard that starts at 7:00 PM and I have, we have enough parking space. So he shows up at 7:00 and closes at 10:00 with me.
We'll bring up the site plan so we can see. There's not only parking in the front on the shopping center, but there's also parking to the rear. There we go.
So the business is actually accessible to the rear area?
They would have to walk around the building, but there is parking back there.
Maybe, no, we have a back door.
You do have a back door, okay? I stand corrected. They have a back door. That's great.
Is that where the gas station and the Starbucks is located?
Yeah, there's a Starbucks there. Yeah, well, Starbucks is in this building. And then the gas station is this way.
Awesome. What kind of food?
Good food, by mona and my senior food. Five stars. I didn't prepare.
Make sure you're getting pissed hands with y'all. Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Anybody else wishing to speak on this agenda item, step forward.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry I didn't get the intersections right here on Whatte Avenue. Was the intersection?
Francis Gil, point three Francis Gil.
Thank you.
You are. Anyone else wishing to speak on this agenda item? See any no interest? And I'll close public communications. Commissioners, any other questions to the staff? See any no interest? And I'll take a motion.
I move to approve.
My second.
Any objections? CNN, motion passes, three zero, for Resolution PC 710. Next agenda item?
Honorable Chair Commissioners, the item before you is a request for consideration of the following: One, a modification to include improved warehouse use for 10 individual units, 8th J. Two, to modify Exhibit A of CP 827 for changes to the site plan and to delete, uh, three, to delete Condition Number 13 of its adopted Resolution PC 1602 as related to noise complaints. And four, intended track map to subdivide the proposed building into 10 individual warehouse condominium units and one common lot within the I industrial zone pursuant to section 153.210.130.0C and 152.10 in the city's municipal code. Location is 5115 Zucanian Road, Unit 8J. The applicant is Kevin Staley of Magellan Group. Case number is CP 827 M O D for modification and TM 74854. The property is owned by industrial and surrounded by both industrial commercial and industrial zone lots to the north and west, as well as industrial-type uses in the city of Urquhartdale to the east. The lot is also adjacent to R1 single-family residential lots that are located to the south. Now, September 29, 2015, the city's designer review committee approved the original design for a new 97,945 square foot warehouse building. However, proposed warehouse use, actually used itself, required planning commission approval of a conditional use permit. The applicant obtained the planning commission approval of CP 827 on January 27, 2016. Now, on January 16, 2017, the applicant then submitted to the planning department a request for an intended track map to subdivide one lot into 10 units with one common lot for condominium purposes. The condominium subdivision request is so that the applicant can create and sell individual units separate warehouse owners. However, a modification to the existing warehouse CP was also required for three changes. These are the following changes that they were proposing. It would be one, to include each unit as part of a, like an umbrella or blanket COP. Since the entitlements run with land and are considered place-based, the original COP was only for 5115 Zucanian Road, not for individual units. The second change would be to rotate the building 180 degrees so that the truck docks are to the north side and furnished away from the residences that are located at the south. The third change would be to eliminate Condition 13 of the original resolution so that it is excluded from Resolution AC 17-12. The condition allowed the city to impose additional conditions to minimize noise as three confirmed complaints were received from residences within a six-month period. The condition was originally included because of the truck docks were located in the south. However, now that they're located on the north side, staff agrees that the condition is not needed. The proposed project will be an improvement to the site. Existing structures on the site are pretty much dilapidated and will be demolished, and the new building and uses will be compatible to surrounding uses to the north, east, and west. The proposed building and site design remain the same as was originally approved by the planning commission with the exception of the 180-degree rotation. Parking will be sufficient for the proposed warehouse areas and office areas. And staff has determined that the project with the added conditions of approval is compatible with surrounding industrial areas and will not be detrimental to adjacent residential areas in the south. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt Resolution PC 17-12 entitled "The Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baltimore Park Adopting Findings of Fact, Improving a Conditional Use Permit Modification to CP 827 and Intended Track Map for Condominium Purposes to subdivide one lot into 10 units and a common lot for a proposed 97,945 square foot building within the I industrial zone pursuant to table 153.050.020 and section 152.10 in the city's municipal code. Location is 5115 Zucanian Road. The applicant is Kevin Staley of Magellan Group and the case numbers are CP 827 M O D and TM 74854. This concludes Scott's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any questions from the commissioners to the staff? I have a quick question. How does it determine that the noise will be eliminated if there's still a... It looks like a fire ring all the way around the building.
The parking on the south side is just more typical automobile parking. The noise that was assumed was from actual trucks docking, which are these little, you know, full tractor, trailer trucks that are now located on the north side. The noise is assumed will be blocked by the 97,000 square foot building.
So those trucks won't be accessing that?
No, no, no. Except for the conditions of approval that have been added that they can only access the north side and the conditions remain from the previous resolution that trucks cannot travel south. They would have to access arrow to the north.
Okay, thank you. I now open public communications for this particular agenda item. If you want, wish to speak, please step forward, state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Staley. I'm from Magellan Group. And Honorable Chair and Commissioners and the audience, also I introduce Mr. Stephen Hong, who's here. He's our architect. Steve is sitting back there. We've been very appreciative of staff's support and the excellent work that they've done over the number of years we've worked on. we've worked on this project, and I just want to express that sentiment. And we are supportive of this, of the staff report, and both Stephen and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, please step forward?
Good evening, my name is Anna Sanchez, and I reside on 15415 Sandstone Street. That would be the residence right adjacent to the proposed, I guess, planning factory or whatever it is. And my concern is also the, excuse me, the level of noise that might be coming. I understand that the trucks will be located on the north side of the complex. However, since if this resolution passes, it will be divided into 10 individual different units. We're not sure, one, what activity will be conducted there, so our concern might not just be limited to the trucks. And two, in the event that the 92,000 square foot facility does not block off the sound, I believe that this would just be an abundance of caution. If there's nothing to worry about, then it really should not be a problem to include it within the proposal and let it be as it may. I believe it's very reasonable for three residents to, within six months, if there are three different residents who are complaining about noise level, for us to be able to approach the city and move on with with altering the level of decibels that would be allowable in certain hours and at certain times. So thank you very much for your time. Thank you. Okay, I'm also very excited to see our city prosper and continue. Thank you so much for the development that's going on in Baldwin Park. So I'm very excited, and I'm looking forward to the growth that our city makes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this agenda item?
Jesse Planta, living at 3805 Boss Avenue, Baldwin Park. I'm a little bit lost right here when you're talking, talking a bit condominiums and the noise of trucks. Are we talking residential condominiums?
We're talking commercial condominiums.
Commercial.
These are industrial condominiums for businesses.
There you go. Anyone else wishing to speak? CNN no interest, and I'll close public communications. Commissioners, any questions to the staff? CNN no interest, and I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the resolution.
I'll second. Any objections? CNN, motion passes for resolution PC 17 dash code, reserved. Next agenda.
Thank you, just wanted to wait today, make sure you got the next agenda. We have no reports of officers. The next item on the agenda under Commission staff communications is the planning division monthly report for the month of May. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any about that. If there are none, then the next item on the agenda is the verbal update of the proposed Irwindale Materials Recovery Facility and Transfer Station. We have no update on that yet. We have heard from city staff over there that their admin draft is done and their attorney is reviewing it. So we're anticipating that once the attorney review, their attorney reviews the environmental document and gives it the go-ahead to be circulated, that it will be circulated relatively quickly, and we will be one of those entities that does receive that document. So it's probably going to start ramping up within the next 60 days or so. So just to, you know, keep that on your radar. The last item, which isn't on here, and unfortunately was unable to be here tonight. The city did hire a new community development director, which will cover planning, billing, housing, Section 8, economic development, CBG. His name is Gustavo Romo. He comes to us from the city of Irwindale. And he wanted to send his regrets tonight, and he was unable to make it, but he did want to come to the next planning commission meeting and meet everybody. So I wanted to pass that along to you. And that is all I have right now. Congratulations.
That is great. Welcome aboard, Mr. Romo. Romos.
Romo.
Romo. Romo.
Like Tony Romo, from what I've been told. R-O-M-O.
So he's going to tell us a lot about the Athens.
Its secrets.
We should give a good information at him, huh?
Actually, Mr. Romo is actually a product of Baldwin Park. He grew up here and then went to Cal Poly. I'm not sure which high school he went to, so I'm not going to go there, but he grew up here, so.
That's awesome. Thank you. Well, if there's nothing else.
Yeah, I got one item. You know, speaking of growing up in Baldwin Park, we had the grand opening of LA Fitness. You know, I went to that last Saturday. The GM there, you know, is an amazing guy, you know, he signed me and the wife up. But he said that one of their guys in the higher ranks of LA Fitness, you know, like CEO right around, he's a product of Baldwin Park. Yeah, so he was like really excited to get all their, all that staff and employees and get that going and see the city growing, you know, they had the Laker Girls, face paint, photos, you know, city officials. It was like a huge turnout, you know, it's right off the freeway. You can't miss that. Pretty exciting stuff, actually, you know, to get us motivated to get up and out and, you know. And then the other construction is like happening like fast with the, those businesses that are going to be like drive-through, the coffee, tea, and bean, and...
It's going to be coffee, bean, and tea leaf, Jersey Mike's, Chipotle, and Guava Grill.
That's a great combo.
I agree with Edwin. I'm a member, I was there. If you guys haven't signed up, the simple classes are really good.
Yeah, that's true, I know the classes.
I wanted to cut the red ribbon, but they didn't let me.
You just put me towards the end.
You represented for all of us.
I have a question.
Sure.
I've been living around here for, what, more than 10 years now? I've seen a lot Francis Kito and Baldwin Park Boulevard. Used to be a gas station, I guess.
Okay.
It's all covered up. What is that going to be after, is there anything?
We received an inquiry, this is a corner of Baldwin Park Boulevard and Francis Kito. We received an inquiry from an engineering firm to look to redevelop that property and the, in the, the car wash next to it with a large infirmary station, but nothing has ever been formally submitted, and that conversation was, gosh, almost nine months ago. So we haven't heard anything since. But hopefully, with the new community development director on board, that'll give us a little bit more manpower to go out and, you know, talk to businesses and recruit them, you know, to come to the city of Baldwin Park, so.
Okay, so that's the goal of that, to...
Yeah, we just haven't had any, yeah, it's, we just haven't had the interest in it.
As long as there wasn't any underground storage accommodations.
No, no, no. Not that we're aware of.
Any other questions, concern? None? I'll now accept the motion to adjourn at this meeting.
A motion to adjourn.
Any objections? CNN, motion passes, I'm leaving adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone in the public. Thank you, staff. Until next.
I did introduce Ingrid McCall, a new attorney with our firm.
Hey!
Sitting in today.
Hello.
Not billing, but sitting.